Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We have the 2:24 meeting of the County Board, special meeting for order this time. Ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance moment.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call?
I feel three members absent, 12.
At this time, I'd seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Members of the public wishing to be heard? Tom, Tom Olduski? And you have five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Tom Olduski, current board chair of the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation, also the board chair of the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center. First, I wanted to say thank you for your continued support of both organizations. Couldn't provide the development services that we offer without your support, so thank you. On behalf of both organizations, I also wanted to personally pass on our condolences on the passing of Tom Thornton. Tom sat on our innovation board and was a great advocate for economic development, and including the CVIC, so he will be missed. So as you look to decide where to allocate ARPA funding, I'm hoping you will consider economic development opportunities. Specifically, I'm asking you to consider investment of $500,000 of ARPA funding to be allocated to a new CVIC building and infrastructure within the Gateway Business Park. This would be located in Chippewa County. This is a, this would ensure continued momentum of economic development within the Chippewa County and increase our tax base going forward into the future. We would look to leverage Chippewa County funding with matching funds from our partners, Gateway Business Park and the City of O'Clare. We'd also be looking to submit an application to EDA for a 50% match of an EDA grant application. I believe if we work together, we can make this happen. And I thank you for your continued support and consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. John Walton?
Good evening, I'm John Walton, also representing the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center. I, my business was a graduate from the center in 1998, so my history with that facility goes deep. And I'd like to echo exactly what Tom said, but I'd like to add, as a graduate of the center, I'm not sure everyone could appreciate the value of that resource for Chippewa County. Our business alone had, I sold it last fall, so I have to say them, not me anymore, sorry. We had an annual payroll of over $5 million. We created hundreds of jobs, we built hundreds of thousands of square feet of building, all literally made possible by the Innovation Center. So when Tom asks for what sounds like a fairly large amount of money for a thing you don't know a lot about, I'd like you to consider the importance of it because as a firsthand experience, it's very important, and this contribution would allow us to leverage it in other places, and I think it would be a very good effort.
Okay. Thank you. Kent Kaima?
Mr. Chairman, we're here to speak about ARPA as well. I believe, I think that that's the presentation, it's part of the presentation.
Our presentation.
Let's draw that.
Same with Travis?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to reports. 6A County Administrator Review and Update. Randy?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to do a couple things here. First is look at our summary sheet and kind of update that. We did have a couple, as you knew, a couple, our committee meetings were going to happen, and I want to give you an update on what happened at those meetings. The Human Services Committee met and moved forward to approve the Foster Parent Support Services, led to get approved by the committee. And then the second one on their Land Conservation Forest Management, they voted that down, so they do not want to move forward with that, but they did come up with a request, and I want to make sure that, we put it in the packet to make sure the committee was on board with exactly what I have. So I'll need the committee's input if this isn't correct. But essentially, the description is, the project work would consist of testing wells that are already part of the Chippewa County's well testing program. The additional cost would be to conduct additional testing. Right now, they're doing testing on around 200 wells, and they're kind of stepping it down from like, some wells get the full test, if you will, and then, or just nitrates, nitrites, then other wells get additional tests, and then other wells even get additional testing on top of that. I have been in contact with the gentleman that does the testing, and he'll have a presentation at the next Land Conservation Forest Management meeting to discuss that. I don't think, he doesn't think there's a value in doing the full test, but he does think it's a good idea what we're proposing, so. So the additional testing would include distinguishing between nitrates and nitrites, PFOS, which I'm sure you guys have heard a lot about, some pesticides, nitrate tracing, determining if it's from human or livestock, so that would be some of the additional testing. Another phase of the project would be to have the county epidemiologists analyze current and future date, data. What I found out since I wrote this is that UW Stevens Point has a pretty detailed website that does have all our testing and all the public testing, which I wasn't aware of, so that'll be part of the presentation when it comes to land conservation. I think the committee's going to be blown away with that. And then I discovered another website that does not as detailed for our county, but spreads over many more test contaminants. So we'll have all that at land conservation, so obviously, this is all kind of evolving as we go forward, though. Then the county would contract with experts, they have county recommendations on how to best mitigate the contaminants, I think obviously that's a big part. I think I mentioned this at the committee meeting, I had this idea before ARPA or any funds ever hit, so I went down the rabbit trail of trying to figure out the DNR as far as having funding available for it. And basically, what happens currently in the DNR is it's only for facilities, for villages, cities, some kind of, some kind of municipality, it does, it did not qualify for individual wells to do any kind of mitigation. There is currently a bill in, going through Wisconsin, and I don't know the, where it is, it would have to pass within the next three weeks because they're going to be out of session, but it does extend those grants to individual landowners, which is interesting. But I did like start the trail, like I said, and talked over the DOA staff and tried to figure out the, how to do it. Because it's one thing to come up with the idea, but to actually put it in place and try and figure out, it's going to be complicated depending on what you, what the committee or the county board decide this program should look like. I think everybody's heard of reverse osmosis, that's a big one, drilling wells is a big one, but how do you do that? And how do, what do we have to report back to ARPA? We have to still work all that kind of out, but, so the final phase is, like I said, come up with the mechanism to help residents, landowners reduce, eliminate contaminants in their individual wells. I'd really like the committee, if I could hear from you, to make sure I captured what we talked about, because I took everything you've said and tried to put it in this, and this is what will, obviously, if the county board wants to prove this, this is what the program would look like, so. If I just get some feedback from them, I appreciate it right now.
Supervisor.
In that last paragraph, I think an important part is that not all, but the majority of the nitrate issue is connected to agriculture, so a good effort being made to help farmers assess their nitrate issues in a way that they can fix it. And that we spend at least as much money fixing what we can as we do testing. So it's wishy-washy there, but as much effort put into preventing further damage as in trying to mitigate the current damage.
Do you have a, I guess I don't know how to, what to put down for that.
Whether that be through prep, you know, issues, or just being able to measure the amount of nitrogen being put onto the soil so that excess nitrogen isn't used as best we can.
Don, if I can piggyback on that, because I think we talked about, like Jerry Clark is doing some experimentation in Chippewa with some farms and some agricultural aspects, plus I believe UW Madison is doing some, to try to reduce nitrates. So it's kind of, I don't know if we really said any one thing, but basically saying, when this data starts to get digested, whatever comes out of it, whichever direction's got to go, that's where we want it. Is that pretty much where we're at?
Yeah. It's going to take the first year, at least the first year to generate the data, and then the second part is doing something with it.
Once you see the website, you're going to see we have the data, pretty much.
I did see the website and...
Did?
Yeah.
How'd you get to see it? I never got to see it.
Buck forwarded it to me, but...
Oh.
You're always last knowing.
Yeah.
But that's just...
I'm glad.
That doesn't tell us what to do with it.
No, I know, but it's the data, yeah. So do, are you suggesting, oh, look, because you were in the committee.
I, the way I thought this was wrote up, the way we had talked, is we would take this amount of money and hold it in an account to start this project, and I think that two experts that aren't selling, trying to sell us anything, comes up with a plan that I hope is two-pronged, try and stop it before it starts and clean up what we got. So I think with all intensive purposes, that's what the money's there for, not even minimum what it's going to take to do it. So it's a start.
So what I'm hearing is to have the experts come up with a plan to prevent and to mitigate the contaminants. Okay.
Okay. Does anybody agree with that, on the committee guy?
Does that sound right? Okay. I appreciate that. So for...
Nobody looks at that either. I'm right in front of him. Basically, we, the motion from the committee was to make it kind of loose so that we can, because we don't know what we don't know yet and which direction to go, so we want to kind of lose parameters to do it, get the most bang for a buck. So I guess, I mean, that's not real definitive for the board, but I don't know that we're far enough in process to make it any real definitive. And then the other thing is, I think you got your date wrong here in Section 3. On the meeting date, that should have been 23rd, I believe. Just typo, probably.
Yes. Is that right?
Probably not a big deal, but...
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Enough meeting, just three grand.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, but yeah, I think that does keep it broad enough, don't, if the board agrees or the committee agrees, that we'll let the experts come up with a plan that does those two things, look at prevention and look at treatment.
What we can do, what we can do to help the situation.
Okay. So that's what the committee came up with, I'll put that on the summary sheet, and then obviously, and we can talk about it after, on the brainstorming here in a second, but, so that's what the committee came up with, and we'll get added to the summary sheet and we'll take that one off. Okay, so I'm open to the brainstorming session.
Yes, Gary, go ahead.
So, is, I was just confirming from, is this one we can bring up ideas or just about the water?
Nope, this is the brainstorming thing, I think we're, I think we put that one to bed.
Then I have something I'd like to suggest. I'd like to suggest that we look at having a re-entry coordinator in the jail versus having a jailer do the programming down in the jail to connect those people in the jail to connect to resources, to get their AODA programming, and some of those other things versus contracting out of Ellie Phillips. And this way, right now, they're not getting those services because inside, or outside people can't come in, and we don't have a staff member right now that can provide that, or if they, when they do, the jailer's getting pulled because we're short in the jail.
So that would be for the duration of ARPA funds available, or are you looking to see something permanent?
Eventually see something permanent, but at least start that way and see where to and what.
So currently, are you saying that we have a contract with Ellie Phillips to provide that service and to see if we can switch that to a position within the county and then provide that service?
Yes.
I did, when you talked earlier, obviously, I reached out the rolls and she's gone one day. So I couldn't get the details for the meeting, but I will look into that.
Any else sign any of these?
Just looking for more detail on number of facility and parks, proposals. Get an idea of what some of these things mean and...
We got just a guy here. Ask over here, you can go through each one.
Good evening, thanks for asking. I'd be happy to share some details. Start off with playgrounds. We've got three parks that have aged playgrounds. I'm guessing they're out of the 50s, I can't give you the exact age, but they're the old steel swing sets and slides that I used to see as a kid, so, and I don't age myself. It puts it back their ways. These, these three parks see quite a few kids playing in them. We've had an accident or two on these playgrounds, one sent a five-year-old by ambulance to the hospital for stitches, pretty, pretty bad day, and I would say this is a pretty high priority, that's why it's rated that high. So it's all three of the parks. Let me see, sure I got, it's actually Rowan Lake and the Otter Lake Campground at Pine Point. The next one would be a mini marina at Pine Point. So a few years back, we had an opportunity to relocate the beach at Pine Point Park because it had a huge erosion problem, and it really could not be saved in that position because of prevailing northwest winds, and working with land conservation, the DNR, they recommended relocating it around the corner. So we did that and created a pretty nice beach compared to what was there for sure. When we restored the original beach, we had set up for a little mini marina type setup, so we've got some concrete poured on the shore where we could bring in some docks, if you will, and create an area where maybe four to six camping guests could dock their boats and rent docks while they were there. We have a number of docks at this campground, and they are always the first sites to go, that's the docks, the campsites with the docks. So we'd create a little revenue, we're pretty well set up there, now we just have to buy the dock systems and roll them in. That's that one.
Larry, on that one, will that include like the application stuff for the DNR and the cost for that kind of process, or is this just the hardware?
I think this will cover it all.
Okay.
Haven't been the best estimator over the last 15 years, I would bet my life on all of these, but there's a lot of work to work through, but I would think we got it covered pretty well. The next one is fishing docks. We've got an opportunity to install a fishing dock at Otter Lake Campground. Currently, we have a asphalt that goes into the water, it's a quasi boat landing that nobody used, hasn't used for ages. It's in the campground, there's not much room to maneuver a vehicle, a boat, there's many other boat landings on that lake, so it's just not used. And this, this area would allow us to roll in like a fishing pier for kids and then take it out in the winter, it'd be really easy access because we got the ramp there now. It's pretty inexpensive, and it's a really good fishing area, so I think the park patrons and public would really enjoy this feature. The next item is campsite docks. So currently, we have 30-some campsites out of the 98 that have docks available, and again, they're the first sites to go, very popular, all the parks are on lakes, and this would be an opportunity to upgrade these very aged docks, they're all wood docks, you know, we replace boards on them routinely, but they're not all that safe. If you ever walked on an old wood dock that's seen some water, they're very slippery, so occasionally we'll get somebody that makes a spill on them. So this would upgrade them with some aluminum docks, it would have, they'd be a little easier for us to install and pull out, the wood's really heavy, and it's kind of a safety issue as well. It would also allow us to add maybe six, eight, 10 docks to what's there now, because we've got room, we feel like we have room for some more, we did a pretty good survey, and so that's where we come up with the 43. I think we have about 34, 35 now existing. That would be at all three of the parks with campgrounds. The automatic firewood dispensers? So this is something that we've just really stumbled across in the last year, so, you know, I don't know how to describe it other than, you know, much like a pop machine, you put your money in and you get a soda out, the firewood dispensers, we'd load it up with firewood, you put your money in and would be able to get your firewood out. So now, we've got park caretakers, they work full-time, seven days a week, so that's six point something hours per day, so there's a lot of hours per day where there's no one around to sell firewood, and a lot of the caretakers will actually stay right at the parks, the campsite if they choose, so some stay all summer, some come and go. So if they're there in the evening in their off hours, they'll get bothered a lot to go get firewood for folks, and they almost always will. But these dispensers would allow us to sell more firewood and serve the patrons better. Load it up during the day while they're working, and that should theoretically take them through the evening and then reload it again in the morning. So that's what that's all about. And then the last item is new picnic tables, 30 of them. I can't tell you exactly how many picnic tables are in the parks total, but I would guess it's somewhere between 130 and 160. There's a lot of picnic tables. Many of them are like the same vintage as the docks, old wood. You know, they work, they don't grate, some of them, we try to replace wood pieces and so forth as we go. This would give us an opportunity to replace these tables with a lighter version, much easier for us to move. We've got to pull them out of storage and put them out each spring, and then put them back in storage in the fall, and hopefully, they need less maintenance than these wood picnic tables. It's really like almost flooring on the campus here, we never end with, we're always replacing flooring somewhere. We have so many picnic tables, we should continuously be doing 10 a year or something just to keep up on them, you know, and I don't think we have done that, we've repaired many of them over the years. So this won't, this will only do a percentage of them, but it'd give us a good start, we could take the 30 worst ones out of commission. So that's the parks projects.
Ken?
The courthouse projects. A couple of those I got a little problem with. The hands-free plumbing is one of them, $500,000. I mean, you replaced the faucets fairly recently, you got the long handles on, people can use their forearm, whatever, if they don't want to touch it, for $500,000, assuming you need new faucets with electric eye on, correct?
Correct.
I don't see the, I don't see the driving need for that, in the scope of the other projects we have, what we're looking at. And then the other one is $450,000 to move that wall, however many people can move it that way, seems a little steep.
I could address the second one first, if that's okay?
I don't care how you address it.
The $450,000 came from Wold, Architectural and Engineering, and what I can tell you is they also assist, well, they assist us with many projects, their specialties is schools and government centers, that's what, that's what they specialize in. They worked with us on the Court Commissioner area on second floor, that was new, I don't know, let's say, seven years ago, and they came in with a budget number of, I believe it was like $245,000 or $243,000, and I don't know if everybody's familiar with that space, but it's not very big, I'm pretty sure it's not the size of this room. And when they came in with that number, I thought, oh, we're going to have lots extra on this one. I think it came in like $2,000 over budget, so they were like spot on, basically. So they're pretty good at estimating, if they're right on, I'll take credit for it, but no, this is their number, and so, yeah, that's all I can tell you.
I guess, I guess I'll stick with my prior comment, it's a lot of money for what we're getting.
It is, there's some technology involved, we have to move that, but...
The wood, some wires and stuff, yeah. But $450,000, I mean, even in today's inflated market, I could build a halfway decent house for that. You're looking at one room, the roof is here and the floor is here, I mean, maybe it's a naive statement, but I got a problem with that, so.
Do you want any feedback on the hands-free?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go for it.
Try to sell it. The hands-free really has to do with COVID and keeping people safe. I mean, this was nowhere really on the radar, and in the five-year plan, we thought we had some dollars, a good feature to help keep people safe. A lot of the, a lot of the bathrooms are aged 30-plus years, some of them are 50, 60 years old, so, for instance, if we wanted to replace paper towel dispensers with hand dryers, hands-free, you know, hand dryers, you look at these main bathrooms, we got stainless steel built into tiled walls, so we bought a hand dryer and we were going to install it, and we're like, oh, this is going to be pretty involved. So, so to do that, to put these hands-free in, that's how the number gets pretty big pretty quick, because you get power there, where there isn't power, you've tiled walls, you got to open them up, and then when you're doing that, the bathrooms are old, you know, we've got rusted ceilings, we've got trazol that's, that's in poor shape by a number of the urinals that really should be replaced, some of them, we've actually had to take the floor urinals and get them wall-mounted and replaced and rework trazol down below, so there's been, some of them, I think first floor we did that already, countertops that are faded, cracked, sinks that are cracked, so, yeah, that, you know, and that number came from mechanical engineering, Apex Engineering worked closely with Heath over there, and we walked and looked and talked and talked and put a bunch of hours into it, and I guess I kind of got to own all of this, but I think we gave him accurate information and he run the numbers a few times, so if we did decide to move forward, I don't think we're going to be way off on this, unfortunately, things are expensive, so.
I got a strong hunch on my constituents that say... I got a strong hunch on my constituents that say.
Is that replacing all of the faucets or is that replacing just the old parts of the building or?
Excellent question. The jail has, oh, I can tell you how many showers and toilets and faucets in there for the two hundred and some inmates that we can hold. So we would do nothing over there. The jail's kind of a separate, whole separate area. Everything is pneumatic and electric controlled. Because they can't, if they have control, they'll flood things. So it has nothing to do with the jail hardware that the prisoners or inmates would see. But it has, it would affect pretty much all the other bathrooms. It also goes into break rooms and lunchrooms where there's faucets. So there's, I wish I had a number. If I had to throw a number off the top of my head, I'd say there's more than thirty five and less than fifty rooms that we would approach. It's a bunch, not six or eight. It's a, it's a whole bunch. If you wanted a number, I certainly could dig that out.
Anyone else?
I know we're not voting on them tonight, but when we come to vote on them, are they going to be individual items or is it going to be all bundled?
Yeah, you're talking to the wrong guy there.
Throw it to Larry. No, it'll be the same thing as you do with CIP. It'll be each individual resolution. Yep. And some of these, I guess I'll just point out too, some of these projects, the ones that are under fifty thousand would not qualify for CIP projects because they're under fifty thousand.
Bucked you, Henry.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious. For me yet or? Yeah, a little bit. You're a historian around here. At one time this board was twenty, twenty nine people. Where did they meet?
Right here.
No, to the basement.
Second floor.
Right here.
In this room.
I was, I was on it. I was on that board. I was in this room, yes.
Oh, and there was twenty nine?
Nope.
It was twenty.
Twenty three?
No, it was twenty nine.
Because.
Twenty nine to fifteen.
It was twenty nine. Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I mean.
Wasn't the old boardroom?
We could, we could save it.
Second floor.
If we just settle a little bit closer together, you know. You know.
I'm kind of dating myself, but the old board, boardroom was on the second floor. Now it's one of the judges. Yeah, it was, well, before it was a courtroom, it was.
Two thousand eight. Two thousand nine is when it moved up here.
And that was, as I recall, almost like pews or something going across Quebec. Been a while ago.
I think a lot of it relates back to COVID and social distance. All that good stuff.
I was just wondering. Thank you. That wasn't.
Anything else? Let me get back to you. Anything else that anybody wanted to brainstorm on or discuss? Michelle?
Meeting that I was at last week, individuals discussed the capacity to attend the meetings and for public comment via technology. There were two pieces to that. Some weren't aware that you could watch via YouTube. But even with that, so there's that piece, which I don't think this costs us any money, but we, it sounds like, need to do some advertising of that. The second part of it is people who are in the northern parts of the county and have quite a ways to travel, especially in the winter, talked about, you know, it would be nice if they could attend meetings for public comment either, you know, via WebEx or or whatnot. And so I just want to bring that forward because people do want to be here and participate, but sometimes the weather like today stops them from doing that. I know there's challenges when we use technology, but it seems like if people signed up in advance and we utilized the public comment part just for the first part where people could and it seems workable to me. So I at least wanted to bring it forward. Again, I don't think this is something that costs us any money.
They are advertising that. It's been in the senior messenger that goes out every month because I've seen it twice now, January and February.
Randy, you got anything down or?
Nope.
Fun. I'm just making sure we're covering the base.
Yep.
Never heard this crowd so quiet.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Broadband.
Can you go to, on, on the screen here, it's page thirty six on our packet?
Are we on the business item?
You know, showing the broadband coverage?
Yeah, can I say a few things first here?
Absolutely.
Do you have to?
Well, are we going to the business item or is this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I.
Yeah, you gotta wait for the chair to get us there, I think.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
You know, it's part of the brainstorming or the.
Yes.
Now that we've talked about it and I think we'll probably free up some money, we already have. Already have gained a half a million dollars just by the one function of the land and forest. The other one goes through, still a half a million. There's another thing that I was, I might as well be upfront here, but I was going to bring it up. But it was putting some money away for the firing range in case we wanted to do some things before we opened it up. But being there's, it's in the news that they're contemplating suing the county. I, I think we better just leave enough alone till we figure out what we got to do. So that kind of squashed my idea. There's, I think there's plenty of things we can do, especially around the roads. All I got to say.
All right, so. Are you ready to go to business items number seven? Then we will, I don't know if we need to put it on the floor yet until we figure out what we're going to do. So I'll open it up to you, Randy.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So obviously coming out of the last listening session, there's two things I heard loud and clear. You want to look at or possibly put some money towards broadband and then obviously the second thing on the agenda is highways. So my plan is whatever you vote on, whatever you decide on the dollars, we will look at the list we currently have and reallocate those funds as available. If there's no funds available, the summary sheet I just gave you guys would go away. But I am looking for a dollar amount, what you're looking to spend towards highways and what you're looking to spend towards broadband. So that, that would be the idea behind these next two business items. I do have Charlie Walker here and he does have a presentation for, and can answer some of your questions. So Charlie, if you want to come up and Charlie Walker's with our economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Randy Ward. You guys are doing a lot of hard work trying to figure it out. So the purpose of my presentation is to give some basic understanding of where we are so you can make a better decision on broadband. And we have some experts that when it gets, if you guys get technical questions that I can't answer, they can certainly answer the questions. So when we talk about, of course, the Chippewa County Economic Development, you guys know the, the mission. But what I want to point out is that when we visit companies, we do business expansion retention visits. And the number one issue that they talk about is labor and number two is broadband. In fact, today I had a meeting with a company that will be moving their business out of the township because of broadband and be looking to a location that has the high service that they need. Broadband on the bear visits, we, we actually have the conversations with them and we have documentation of the ones that we give them. Basically, we do listening sessions, we do feedback, we bring in the experts and that's a big part of where the things come up from the ground up. The broadband expansion, of course, let's start with a definition that's pretty common because it's kind of like weapons of mass destruction. What is it? Broadband is basically a high speed connection between homes, business and organizations and to the worldwide web. It's faster than dial up and of course, the federal government says it has to have twenty five MBS and that's megabytes per second before it can be considered broadband. So increasing the demand of faster connections, that's what everybody's moving to. What the pandemic did show us is that if you had, had dial up, it, it wasn't very effective. So now the argument is how fast can we do? Now, there are types of broadband connections. There's fiber, there's cable, there's DSL, there's wireless, there's satellite. And, and so when you, when you have a, a strategy of how do you get the whole county covered with broadband, you look at fiber is the most reliable. It's also the most expensive to do. Cable, we all have experienced that. That has its limits. DSL is basically the copper technology for fast. And then wireless technology, what's the problem with wireless is you got to have the cell phone towers. And so you've got great cell coverage if you got a cell tower. If you don't have a cell coverage, you don't have it. Satellite, you've heard a lot about satellite. Satellite is, is good. The technology's getting there, but it's very expensive. We're talking about a hundred and ninety nine dollars a month. So it creates more of a digital divide. It, it is a technology that is out there. It's subscription. They do have, it's getting better and better, but the cost is not going down. Fair to say, raise your hands if I'm saying anything wrong on the technology side. Let's talk about how much speed do you need? This is kind of a neat chart. If you're just doing general browsing or email or social media, you're going to need zero, zero to five MBS. Five to forty if you're video conferencing, telecommunicating, online gaming, streaming. If you're going to go to a little bit more usage, like you're going to do Netflix and, and those kind of things, you're going to need more and more. Today, though, it's in the hundred, the five hundred MBS and that's what we're talking about in today's world with the business especially. When we talk about agriculture and precision, it was interesting to hear when you guys were addressing the nitrates. What will be happening and Ken and I, we had a great conversation, hopefully we're in the Bahamas in, in retirement, but they're going to be doing blockchain technology to, to help the farmers. And that's going to be measuring in speed and, and making sure fertilizer amounts. And so agriculture is being forced into a technology of monitoring nitrates and blockchain's here. And if you don't have the fiber, those farmers are going to be left behind. Those farms are going to be, in the rural areas, quite frankly, are going to be left behind. So it's coming to be that broadband is touching every day of our, of our life. So let's talk about the United States on coverage. This is a map that shows where of all types, cellular, DSL, this is what the coverage is for the United States. So basically you can see that the light parts, there is some digital divides. This is if you just break it down with cable, fiber and DSL. So you can see that it gets a, a little bit, little bit better. And then with the cell service, you can see that that is. But let's talk about Chippewa County. And one of the things that you wanted to know is where is the actual service? Chippewa County staff did an excellent job of reaching out to our partners and, and the telecom co-ops and trying to create some maps to get a baseline of where we're at. This is from the state's website, but that problem there is they self-report. That means the AT&amp;Ts and the Blumer telephones and the citizens, they report, self-report to the government saying how fast their speeds are. So what we're finding is some of the maps aren't as reliable. I'll take a step out right now. Now you're going to be hearing some things in the next month and a half where Chippewa County is going to start leading the effort to do some testing. So we're going to start a campaign where you can go to a website and test the stuff just to help with the accuracy of the maps on that. This is the map that the Chippewa County, this is gold, by the way. Randy Dennis did a fantastic job. This is what our coverage of Chippewa County looks like. What we want to pay attention to is the white spots, right? The white spots is no coverage. When we go up to the darker areas, of course, is the faster speeds. We overlaid where the, the broadband grant applications are saying that they have to be to underserved or underutilized areas. So that's in the yellow that they've identified. And then in the red is where some broadband grant applications that you previously approved are being served in, in, in those areas. So you can see when you look at Chippewa County, just at that amount, you can see if our goal is to get a hundred percent broadband coverage in Chippewa County, we've got a, a ways to go. And what we've been doing is, and this isn't something that started two years ago or a year ago, we have people in the room. I think Blumer Telephone, I was going on ten years a gig or something. So our co-ops have been aggressively fighting and that's why you see all that tan. They've been doing a hell of a job, quite frankly, of pushing and putting their capital in there and trying to cover that. With all the broadband money out there, what they have to do is leverage. So they're taking their money, fifty percent of their capital, and then they're leveraging and they, and we're trying to get more money. And you're wondering why I'm going to go on to, to, this is the, the next map. This is the speeds that to give you a little bit, bit better speed. So the blue is that high speed chuck where every, I mean, that's fast. So that's the one gig speeds that we have. And you can see it's, it's kind of, it, it goes right along with the co-ops. I, I don't, this isn't a commercial for the co-ops, but the telephone co-ops are doing a great job. Where the white and the stuff are are the big boys. The AT&amp;Ts, the charters, they're not making their investments in the county. And so you can pretty much see, I think, if anyone knows that they have a charter or Century Link or AT&amp;T, you can see you're probably in the white area, okay? So why is it so, so expensive? So lay, first you got to lay the backbone and then it's primarily served to the anchor institutions. And I put this up there because you could have a hospital in your community or clinic and they got, or a school and they got great broadband, right? And you live right next door and you go, why can't I tap into it? Well, you just can't because typically they're in a, in a private sync network and they're the top anchor institutions that are serving it. And most of them are, are already served. The expense comes to the, what we call the last mile, the residents, putting in, in the residents. And, and it's really a, a basic capital deal. Think of it like this, if it costs you fifty six thousand dollars a mile and you're one mile apart to run in the wire, buy the rights and, and put in the, to one house and you charge a hundred and twenty five dollars a month for cable, how long is it going to take you to get your fifty six thousand dollars back? That's why AT&amp;T and Charter and people aren't doing it because it's no return on investment. We can't charge you the residential rates high enough to get that money back. If I have to put money in it, I'm going to put money into the Eau Claire's and the Milwaukee's and where the density is so I can get that return on investment. So the rural areas are rapidly being left behind. And COVID, in fact, really highlighted that in the use of the home when we stay at home. So the last mile cost is really going to be the most expensive right now. And, and Ken, you guys know, you've been deploying the, what we call the, the backbones throughout because you got to do the backbones and then you spring off like roots to get to the residential sections. And the most, most of the backbones getting, getting done and then the last mile costs are the ones that you're seeing so expensive. So when you see these costs up like only eight hundred thousand dollars for, to serve, you know, twenty, twenty five people, as you get closer into that Chippewa County white, it's going to get more expensive. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
If I say anything, just, this is, so one of the things that also drive that cost up is labor. They close your ears, you're not here. But one of the things is skilled labor. Everybody's having a skilled labor shortage. Can you imagine trying to find the, the skilled labor of people to, to do that? So it's just hard to recruit the people. Some companies locally are bringing them out of state, hiring them. So it's expensive. They're skilled, skilled jobs and it's doing that. Another thing is the rising cost of oil. Well, why does that? Well, they have to deploy those trucks. They got to pay the gas and everything that that keeps going dries that cost up and it continues to do it. The other thing is the shortage of chips. The computer chips and the switching components and all that, they, they just can't get them. So they have to put in the order for them and they got a long lead time to do it. So a short, of all these factors that are coming to do justify. So a short, of all these factors that are coming to do justify or show why it costs so much per mile to lay fiber. And I wanted you guys to get a basic understanding of that. The economic impacts are huge. The rural areas, and I showed you in the white, are rapidly being left behind. And so this is an opportunity where, where with what we all know, one of the very first things you could use your ARPA funds was broadband. And that's why, because if anything, you're safe knowing that putting that in meets the definitions. We see in education, and I put some things in here that I just looked at, when you look at, we all know education is getting, your kids getting bombarded with homework, they're just pushing out a lot of, do it, do your stuff at home, work at home, do school, all of it is a major issue. 50% of the students that were surveyed were unable to complete their homework. Now, not only, for those who specialize in mental health, you know exactly what that does to self-esteem and how that puts a kid behind. So when you talk, when we talk about our kids or our talent or our future workforce is being left behind, that's part of that. It's because they just, they live in the rural areas, but they just can't get, keep up with the schoolwork. I put a statistic, when MIT established their first online course in 2012, this blows my mind, the number of registrants that they had that go through that course were more than all the graduates. The first year they offered that course online was more than all the graduates of MIT alumni combined. That's insane, but that's where the world's going, opening up the internet for education and everything. And that was in 2012, and it's only getting faster and faster and faster. And you know your community colleges, you're going to take to a college credit and things like that, all based on the importance of having that backbone. Digital technology transformation is happening in all industrial sectors. Like I said, today I met with a company that they have to leave, they have to expand, they are leaving a small town because there's no broadband service, and they're, they can't. When they do their automatic robots and stuff, it's got to be connected to the internet, it's got to have it, and they're going to go places where it is. How it works at the local economy, we already know statistically that entrepreneurs do better with, when they're connected. You actually raise more capital in a broadband community where you're connected. They can sell their products. It's a statistical interesting, you would think that the Main Street businesses would be hurt as more broadband is deployed and people are using Amazon. It's actually sales tax in counties that have a larger deployment of broadband actually do not lose tax revenue. They actually increase in tax revenue, which is because that entrepreneur, people are starting to sell stuff, and they're getting into the game as to. There's no doubt that we've been pretty, and it's the leadership in the room that has done it. Chippewa County has done fairly well through COVID because of the leadership in the room, and we didn't suffer as bad as other counties in the state. But it has impacted us, and it is something that we need to move for. So the broadband, telecommunication, telework, when we look at people who are moving to work, you know, you've heard of the Great Recession, people were resigning their jobs and they're choosing to work, and one of the things they choose is affordability. Where I can live affordably, where I have outdoor experiences, and wait a second, where I have broadband. So we've got some great parks, we've got some great outdoor experiences, it's affordable living in Chippewa County, but in some of the areas, we just don't have. And when I'm saying broadband, I'm not talking about dial-up, Dean, I'm talking about high-speed gig where I can download the blueprints, and I can make my work changes and do that, I can get on the conference calls. So we're, through your leadership, we're moving that. And this in Chippewa County, we've been working on it for 10 years, and that's why our map has more blue than most counties do. Precision agriculture is getting big and big, and we are still a big agriculture-producing county, and it is a huge deal. It was interesting to hear about the nitrates and you guys taking steps to solve that, but you talked about data analytics and gathering the data, and I'll tell you, when they connect the meters to the high-speed internet, they put blockchains to it, and it's going to happen, and those farmers that don't get in it are going to be left behind, and those manufacturers that don't modernize their technology are going to be left behind. So our broadband is so important to our local economy. And that's what my purpose, Randy, is to get just a baseline education so while you're making these decisions, you can kind of see broadband, I've got it, but do I really have high-speed? Because the game today is, do I have the high-speed, do I have the connectivity, does Chippewa County have the backbone? And what we've been trying to do for the last 10 years is leverage. We're going to try to take some money that we have and then take through the governor's grants and leverage that. And this court was foresight enough to approve 1.7, Randy, I think, million dollars in broadband, and it's already been leveraged. And so we were able to get more bang for your buck, and I will shut up there and thank you for your leadership and everything, and I'll take your questions. Yes, sir?
Mr. Schmidt?
Can you put the map back up?
Yes, sir.
Coverage of the county?
Okay, that is the speed coverage, and then this is just everything. So let's go, this is people that have it, and that's where the governor says we want to take $100 million in grants, and we will give it to folks who cover those yellow areas and those white areas, and so the red, the green are where those applications. You have in front of you some applications for assistance to help leverage those grants, and they're moving into the white area, okay? But your question?
Speed map.
Now, there is a disclaimer, and Dennis would kill me if I didn't say this, it's the best information that we could get, where we could get from PSC, where we could get from the co-ops. There were some companies that just weren't going to give us their secret proprietary information, so pretty much it's as accurate as we can, but...
I know, and I was looking at that too. I believe the town of Howard, when we get done with the grant they've gotten, it'll be all covered.
Yes, I believe so too.
And I think that's going to be the same in some of those other white areas on the road, probably Tilden, Bloomer, Cooks Valley area, hopefully. I don't know if we've all way into Tilden.
And the folks in the back room could talk about, that's why the summer they applied, you know, those grants, those are not reflective on the speed map.
Okay.
Because it hasn't been implemented yet. You guys haven't completed the project.
So what towns in Chippewa County are sorely lacking? What population centers for speed and capability?
Well, that would be all in the white. I always say the eastern part of the county is really struggling. The southeast is struggling too. I could give that to, I know Bloomer Telephone's looking at Lafayette. Lafayette is, I mean, when we talk, okay, Lafayette, okay, I don't have to pick on names, but they're struggling, they need some speed, you know, and then you can get some, again, we could talk about how Century Link has said they have gig service, but we don't. Okay, it's not there. So there's a lot of spots in Lake Hallie that, if you live in Lake Hallie, you got great, but you don't. So there are those areas too. But basically, where you see the white spots is the population centers. I pick on Stanley there because Stanley is, as you can see in the spots out there going into Clark County, we're doing a project now that's right on the border of Clark County, and they're going to need some broadband, and it's going to be some expanse, even though they have Century Link. I mean, it's just not, they've already done the test, it's not believable. Yes, sir, Chuck.
There's a question on that. This is exclusive satellite, right?
That's correct.
Everybody can get satellite.
Yes, if you want to pay for it, right.
Well, it's not $200 a month.
It's $199.
It's not, it's not. If you want to get gigabanned, you might not get gigabanned, but...
Mr. Walton was sitting behind you, and he has Starlink, he pays 225.
Well, you might, depending on how many gigabytes you need.
And there is a program on the Eau Claire County that's being subsidized, and that subsidized through Elon Musk is $165 a month, but it's...
You're carrying pickin' expensive plans. HughesNet, there's Dish out, there's a bunch of them out there, you can start at about $65 a month and go on up to about $150.
On speeds?
It's 25, but 25 megabytes per second. It's available out there. So they're not without it, but it does, yeah, you're right, it's expensive. Wired broadband and the other stuff is a million times better, but they're not totally without.
Well, there is satellite, that's, I agree, there is satellite, and it is expensive.
Well...
Compared to fiber.
How much do you pay a month for fiber?
I mean, how much does an average person pay for fiber?
You know what, I can speak to that, Charlie.
I'm not putting it down, I'm just saying...
Each company has different pricing structures. Ours in particular, we have our lowest package is 100 meg over 100 meg, so that's up and download speeds, and we're currently at $49.95 a month. Some companies have a little bit more and less, it just depends on the overhead of their companies, and so we're in a competitive market where we felt that that was a price point that we needed to go to. On top of that, we do lease a router to our customers for another $10.95, so, you know, kind of gives you a basis for what that is. You know, and I think even playing into this, Charlie, one thing I wanted to mention, you were talking about the different speeds and the requirements of each family. The average household today has no less than 10 devices that are currently using or utilizing internet services as we speak. You don't think about some of the things that go on in there as far as that goes. Most families of four or five, every cell phone connects to their wireless once they're in the home. We have refrigerators, washing machines, things of that nature that are all now connecting to those services. So on top of Johnny and Jimmy and Jane watching Netflix at a high, you know, at a HD service, which can take upwards of 15 megabytes at one particular time and upwards of 25, depending on what quality of speed they're using, you know, it's just getting more and more and more. Statistics show that the internet usage by the American public is doubling every 18 months. So if you think about an exponential rolling of that service and how much absorption and consumption that the American public is using, that's what we're dealing with. And that's coming from wind, who is our provider of services here in the valley, so...
Thank you. And Mr. Hall is correct, with satellite, we're fortunate being in the northern part of the hemisphere, and that satellite, those satellites rotate around the earth fat more times than if you were in the southern part of the state.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is satellite, but it is...
Just to say, these people are not without some, I mean, just to make it sound like they have nothing.
Yeah, I think to your point too, though, it's also capped, a lot of the satellites capped, and then you have to pay after your 25 gig or whatever.
The plans you buy, you buy a bucket full.
And there are places in Chippewa County that you can't even get Starlink. I know they don't make it available yet, but like HughesNet, I'm sure you've been...
They're not a deal, but they're...
And then too, like his, you know, our base package, we have a lower one that's 50 meg by 25 meg, because, you know, sometimes that's what people need because they don't stream 8,000 movies like...
Well, the stuff like you have, I live in Chippewa Falls, I'd love to have that. We don't have your stuff.
Ours is, ours is basically like $39.99. So, and you can have your own router, you know, we sit, so...
Ken just started a question. And again, and I'll get Mr. Schmidt, but Mr. Hall's correct. As you know, the city of Chippewa Falls is working with other internet providers that provide competition so that price can be lowered, and AT&amp;T is one of them, so that's...
It's hard, it's hard to get them to spend the money, it's really hard.
Yes, sir.
We've approached a number of times.
So how reliable is satellite? If you're running a business and you've got somebody sitting there 25, 30 bucks an hour at the desk, how efficient is that?
Satellite's pretty reliable. Of course, it's, like I said, in the northern part of the hemisphere, it's pretty reliable because the satellites are connected and rotate, not as much. But for running a actual machine, you still have the weather, and you still have some other problems that you don't have with fiber broadband. So it is reliable, but fiber is the most reliable technology.
Starlink's motto or what they started to go with right away was better than nothing internet. So, I mean, it definitely is. Yeah, so that's what they're saying. Get Starlink.
And they are slow, they are slow. I mean, you, once you connect, then it is slow, but at least you do have...
It's 21st century modem.
If you say you need this fiber for business and stuff, I mean, what would it take to get Blue, Cadot, Boyd, Stanley to grow that, you know, industry over there? At least get it to the industry, you know, the areas with the potential for industry.
Can I just give you an example based on, you know, I'm not necessarily going to go where you talked, but what Bloomer Telephone is, is has a proposal that we're putting together for Hallie and Lafayette, okay? This little chunk right here is over $5 million. So if you're talking filling in the remainder of the white, you know, we're dealing with...
Well, I'm just thinking, even if you take the villages, you know, Cadot, Boyd, and Stanley, just, you know, a line straight across, we have some lines, you know, narrow bands there and got it to those towns to start expanding it, you know, maybe to the industrial parks or to the hospital or, you know...
The limitation that we have today is that this and green is not qualified for their funding today. So we're playing in the rurals because that's what we have. I think all of the companies that would be having this discussion today say, we will get to the edges and then we'll have that discussion at that point, certainly. So, Charlie, is that, I think that's legitimate.
And it's expensive as you go where no company has gone before because of the reasons I explained. So it's going to be, it's not, the price tag is shocking when you look at a price per mile. I think 36,000 to 56,000 mile range because you've got a house every, you know, mile and a half, and you've got to do rideaways. Now, there are certain things that Randy is going to be requested as well, and we continue to move with broadband. So even when we've gone beyond this, we want to continue to leverage grants and USDA money and wherever we can. And so we're also going to be asking Randy to be writing letters of support for like AT&amp;T. We want AT&amp;T to put in stuff. We don't want to give them any money, but we want to write a letter of support to say, hey, go for it, and that means something. We'll put it in. So we want to have an all approach, multi-pronged approach to covering that white.
Charlie, one more point to, while it's important to discuss the implementation and putting this service in, the companies that are represented here, we will also then be taking care of that infrastructure once it's in. And there is not a funding mechanism for this particular type of service. So we don't have an ongoing subsidy or anything of that nature. It will be our responsibility to make sure that the technology stays up to date, that everything is serviced properly, that any damage to that infrastructure gets fixed, and those customers are back online. So, you know, there is, there's more to it than just putting it in the ground at that point.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, it's probably the best investment that one can make. Brian and I will go head to head because roads are important, they are, I can't, but fiber's important too. Those are the things that, what investment can you make in the future that are going to take care of your kids and make sure that commerce gets happening and data gets happening? And you guys nailed it on the head, it's your last brainstorming, it's roads and fiber that are, that is going to be that. The rest, you know, comes when you have economic growth.
I have a little question for him. If we dedicate some money to this more broadband, what area is it going to?
Well, that's a policy decision for you guys, and I'm just here to give you information. Obviously, every citizen in Chippewa County deserves high-speed internet. The goal is to get there. It's just going to be very expensive, and it's going to be a time, like I said, we started this 10 years ago, the co-ops have been on it, they understand. So how much would you put? That's a policy decision that, why you guys are brainstorming and having that argument. You know, there are some that will say, I'll pick on Brian, he'll put 100% on roads, right? 100% on Broadway. It's where you guys do it, but, and where can you get the best bang? That's why we've done it. You guys have done a great job because you allocate and we leverage. So we allocate and we leverage, and so everything we're looking at is how can we leverage those dollars to get more bang for your buck? And currently, when the governor has got money out for roads and broadband, we want to leverage those monies as best we can. That's from the economic development perspective of how you can do that, because it impacts all of us. We're, I mean, it just does.
So in less words, you're basically saying that the white areas on the eastern side of the county are going to kind of get the stick a little bit on this.
No, no, that's a policy decision of you guys, and just like you're going to argue and have a great robust fate.
It's pay to spend $2 million to pick up six houses, I mean...
Yeah, but it's going to be a need of what, and I will hold the argument that those kids in those rural areas need to be able to do their schoolwork. You're talking about the mental issues that they're doing, it's huge. The economics of, I'm talking about farming, it's all going. I mean, I know we talk about that, but the internet's where it's going to be, and those rural areas are going to be left behind if we don't do something, and I think everyone in this room agrees to that. It's just how do you bite, what is it, how do you eat the elephant small bites at a time? And I think you're seeing on the map, it's happening, and it's just which area do you want to start chewing up? And we've done, Randy's done a great job of throwing the proposal to our co-ops and saying, okay, we'll get behind those projects that give the most bang for the bucks. But those easy pickings or low-hanging fruit is rapidly coming to, as you see on the map, coming to an end. coming to an end and is starting to get a, a little more expensive. So I hope I answered that question. Randy, did I do everything you needed, the information that you guys needed?
Oh, I've had a thing up there for quite a while.
All right.
Things kinda got out of hand here.
That's the way it goes.
No, I, I, no, sir, I saw you, I didn't see you.
Yeah, can't miss me.
Yes, sir.
Hey, uh, I was at a town meeting, uh, and one of the fiber optic companies come out there and put a, put a talk on to have them, give them some of their money. I was wondering whether they were gonna even put the fiber optics in their town. It's all white.
That's a, I can't answer that question, sir, cause I don't know what the company was and what they were doing. If it was in, in Terra.
Yeah, it was.
Boom, answer the question, get me off the hot seat.
That was one of the grants that we start in this year and next year. You know, unfortunately, you can't, you know, get a grant and all of a sudden put it in that same season. It's really hard to do. So they give you certain grants that give you two to five years to get that work finished. And, you know, being hard to find contractors, you know, we usually work with one or two of them, we can, you know, usually fire out seven hundred homes or depending on what year and how well we do. And so a lot of that stuff that you've seen has been filled in. I know we're, we have twelve hundred customers in three years, in these next three years, we're passing by another twelve hundred homes. So we're moving as fast as we can, and as, and when we get these grants, we plan to cross more homes. So it's just, we can't do everything at once because between the manpower and the construction and the materials, it's just so hard to do in one season.
Yeah, well, I was just, you know, I, I looked at the map and there's nothing there and they give them some money.
Where, where is that on the map that you're talking?
It's Ruby, yup.
Uh, one more question.
Yes, sir.
And Ruby was the one that was applying, we already have the plans to do North of Ruby, we're doing South of Ruby, like you were asking about, you know, like our future plans were to go to Cleveland, Arthur, Ruby, Anson, all in the white areas to serve more homes.
How about Culver?
Outer Lake area.
Cause we have to build off our current one.
Well, that, that brings my second question. The, the blue is where you've gotten grants in, in the county has given you some, these companies some money to put the blue coverage in there right now.
Mr. Chair, if I might, no, sir. The blue is where the high speed is, not all of it. Some of it was capital investment that the, the companies themselves invested. Ten years ago, they did those investments with no grants. Then I added on top of that, last, there, what, last three years, there's been broadband grants. Then there's been extensions, so there's a, the blue's a combination. But the companies like Bloomer Telephone put in the city of Bloomer gig on their own dime, on their own money and their own capital years ago, and, uh, Citizens Telephone has been New Auburn, yeah, years ago. So not to represent that the blue has been all cooperatively funded capital and grants.
Because I was gonna ask, like, Highway sixty-four is, it's following right down Highway sixty-four. Well, if we help subsidize that, we help subsidize going right straight out of our county over to Gilman. And what did our citizens get out of it?
Yeah, you're talking about the backbone and you put in the backbone and the, and the citizens don't get it. That, I.
That wasn't ARPA, that was Reconnect.
Yeah, Reconnect grant.
So it didn't have anything to do with.
Yeah, and that's, that's where, when you get into the technology, that's why I'm glad you guys are here, because I couldn't answer the specifics on that. I know when we, we identified from, that's why I told the bear, this business business ten years ago, we identified broadband as, as an issue, and you guys helped us with letters of support, advocacy, establishing the whole broadband grant process actually started with, I want to give you guys credit, prior leadership to get those ideas and get our legislature. That's why Rob Summerfield has been carrying that whole time, cause it kinda started in Chippewa County with Kathy Bernier getting that legislation to start those broadband grants. So the leadership has been, Chippewa County's been a leader in broadband, and we've got to get the, the goal was to get it all covered, so. You guys have a tough, a lot of tough decisions to make, but.
I have one question for the companies, uh, that price per mile is at, how about density? So for instance, I look at Halle, Lafayette, so Halle, we're talking ten thousand people, Lafayette about eight thousand people, and then we get up in Arthur, Estella, and that country, you can cover the whole thing and not get that many people. But does that price per mile, is it just by mile or is it by customer service?
Uh, it's, it's a variable, you know, and, and really what it comes down to is what's in the, the type of soil, uh, waterways, railroads, roads, different things like that can add to the cost of that per mile cost. Um, you know, to give you an idea, the area that we're proposing with Lafayette and Halle is the rurals, it's not the towns. So we're only looking at about three hundred and fifty to four hundred customers in that, in that entire block as far as that goes. Um, we're, we're projecting about eleven thousand dollars per customer acquisition based on that. So if we, if we take our, you know, approximately the, the five million dollars and we, and we divide it out by the customer basis within, that's where we kinda come up with some of the customer, you know, per, per pass costs. Uh, but the fifty thousand dollars is really kinda ringing true largely even today because of the cost of materials that have gone up. Uh, some of the things that we're utilizing that we put in three years ago, they're up a hundred and fifty percent in their costs today based on, on the supply chain and some, just actually being able to get ahold of them at this point. So we're battling all of those kind of aspects in terms of this.
Ms. Chair, if I can leave with the final comment, that Mr. Kelly is great working with, cause he knows the importance of triple dig, and when he's digging a hole and right aways and working with, and, and that's what it takes to get work done. And so if we can continue to look at how we can put money into roads, we can have cooperative relationships with the co-ops, maybe there's even more ways to do that. And, and that's the collaborative, small, uh, rural attitude that makes these things happen. And so, uh, you know, that's all, that you don't, you give some money, but you also give some cooperation as well and some letters of support and, and some advocacy and some twisting arms with our elected officials, and we seem to get it done. So thank you for your time.
Just a, one more note, to, on like his half, what I was telling you before, we're gonna cover, ours is around thirty-five thousand cost per mile, and we're about seven thousand dollars per sub, so it's a good, you know, probably good, or not as dense, but it's made in the rural area. Um, but, you know, the reason that we're trying to expand is because we, that people need help to get internet. So it's one of those things, we're trying to help these people, and if we tried to do it on our own dime, we'd go broke. We would just, we wouldn't be in business. It's one of those, we try to add, you know, go to get these people out in the counties and the state and do all that kinda stuff, so they can actually work at home, stay in the area, do those kinds of things. So we're kinda here for the people, you know, not for our benefit. So just keep that in mind.
I, I just wanted to say, like, one of my biggest concerns is us throwing money at this, and then like, are they putting a line down sixty-four so that they can get to Gilman and then it doesn't branch off to help our people, you know, in Chippewa County? I'm in Stanley, I have Century Lincoln, they're useless, and, and they've run a, they've run fiber in town, but they were going to, uh, some of their heads east of Stanley into Clark County. Uh, I can't get the fiber. You know, in other words, it didn't spread out again, but yet they, they spent that money. Um, that's, that's probably one of my biggest concerns. And you look at that map, guys, and let's just look east of twenty-seven, I mean, we need the help, we need the coverage. When, when one part of the county does better, the whole county does better.
I guess, but I can add to that is, when the, when they present their grant applications, it shows exactly where the fiber's going. So you'll know exactly where, who they're serving where.
No, when you say where it's going, I mean, well, they say like they're going down sixty-four.
They'll show the block of, those, you have a map, you'll see exactly where the customer service will be after that project's completed.
And one of the main reasons we went to Gilman, cause the school wanted us to be there so bad because they didn't have any. So we got a nation grant, a Reconnect grant, that didn't have anything to do with the state or that guy, to try to help those people out, help that school out, cause it's a school that's one of the closer ones to us. So that was one of our main goals, is to help a, a school and a little school in our area.
And I don't know the answer to this question, but, um, is the one point seven million that the county, um, is obligated from the ARPA funds, is that the only time Chippewa County's giving any funds towards, um.
Correct.
Towards any of the telecoms? Okay.
Yup, and, yup.
So what's on that map, essentially you guys did on your own with leveraging state funds or some kind of.
USDA.
USDA, okay.
Our US funds and things, there were grants, or, or actually loans.
Oh.
We're still paying back.
Oh.
Yeah.
Did not know that either, okay.
Well, just in Terra own, I mean, they've got like eleven million dollars just invested themselves without any, any help.
Their own capital.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Um, so if the wait's already two to five years and there's extreme labor shortages, if we allocate additional money, is it going to be able to be used in the timeframe that we need to use it? And will we set up something so that if by a certain date, it, I mean, if they just can't spend it?
Yeah, we'd have to. So our, we put one, we have one agreement so far, um, but that's what I wrote down in my, my notes too. Um, so the agreements would have to make sure they're done, cause we have deadlines. But they, they're, they're utilizing ARPA funds, right, combined with this from the state, that's the CPS grant, the, where the grant money's coming from. So they have the exact same deadlines on the state level as they do on ours. That's one of the reasons I was comfortable, remember when we first talked, talked about this, is we're utilizing the same grant dollars and the same requirements and same, um, everything's the same. Um, but yeah, they would definitely have to make sure they're done with those projects. Well, it'd be contracted, so, it'd be contracted?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'd be contract, cause we're giving you money for contract essentially to do this, so they'd have to tell December of twenty-twenty-six to complete them.
Now, now, Randy, with that being said, the money that you allocated to us in the last discussions, uh, as soon as the ground is fit, both companies will be, will be, will be working. Our goal, I mean, think about it from this standpoint, when Charlie brought up the fact that if I have to make up the cost of each acquisition per customer at forty-nine ninety-five and I haven't taken my, my overhead out of that, that's six hundred dollars a year. You can see, I want to get that going as quickly as possible. So we, we will be hitting that ground hard and, and we will do as much as we can with the supply chains that we have and the workforce that exists. Uh, our anticipation is that we will grind out as much as we can in twenty-twenty-two, but realistically, we think that it'll be twenty-twenty-three before those projects that encompass Tilden and, and Eagle Point for us, uh, will, will, will be completed in, in its entirety.
And PSC requires you to do it in two, the ones that we're doing now, PSC requires you to finish in two years.
Yup.
And the next round of grants, if I remember, is due in March?
Uh, we really need to have some information by probably no less than March twelfth. I think that's a realistic date, which is the Friday before, the, the, the due date is the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Usually we need to have at least a five-day cushion in case they have questions or anything else, a hiccup in the system.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, the final vote for this is until July. Do you know when the next round of, um, grants, cause is the second, is the second round that came out, is that from ARPA funds too, from the state? Is that releasing ARPA funds?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
The March deadline, is that ARPA funds you got?
This is, yeah, the, yup, yup, this is, well, no, no, the March one is the statewide, uh, that's the, the governor's grant round.
That, okay.
Hundred million dollars in that pool, and that is the one that's coming up right now.
And that's not ARPA funds?
That is not ARPA funds, if I understand correctly, I think that's, I don't want to speak, I don't remember how the governor, how, what, where he, where he got.
They had a, they had a hundred and twenty-five million in the state budget, so I, I didn't, okay, I didn't know if that was one of them.
So, so, you know, and, and I think Randy has what we're asking the county for. We've already visited with the townships, we've gotten commitments from them as well. Um, we're hoping for another, another very, uh, solid infusion from the county, and then we're gonna go to the state folks, uh, and, and we're gonna ask for a lot of funding from them to offset those extra costs, because the deeper we go into these markets, the more expensive it's getting, so.
Well, the only one I've seen was at Charlie's presentation, and I was only from one company, so I haven't.
I think we gave you some numbers.
Yeah, so I was the only one, I don't have them from any other company.
All right. Shouldn't speak for the rest.
I just want to make sure everybody knew.
Yeah.
So we ready to move on?
Well, I guess they, go ahead.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Uh, you had a, a gathering of all the small municipalities and they had probably suggestions. Are we reading any of that into, any of these things?
Uh, they're gonna put it in the roads, I think, what we got. Roads and broadband.
But that's not what we have right now as taken out, or do you have their amount in our numbers?
No, there's, we have nothing with, with, nope, they're, whatever they've done, the, the, um, companies have gone out and got those funds from them. We showed those when we brought the resolutions forward for the one point seven, but that, we don't enter those, those numbers.
Okay.
Yup, that's just our number.
Can we get annual progress reports of what has been completed from that part of?
It's part of our contract. Yup, they have to come and report. Yup, we wrote that in. Um, so I guess my, hearing that, cause I, I assume that there was continuous applications for PSC grants, but it doesn't sound like you guys only know what they release and then they, you may not get another round for another year, or?
Yeah.
How does that work?
That right now.
We, we, okay, so, so here's kind of the timeline. We, we were made aware of this in, in late November. We have until March seventeenth to get this application in, so it's a very tight window.
Like last time, yeah.
Uh, anticipation is that they will award these grants in May, June, and so if there's another grant run that will come down the pike, don't expect it, probably until October, November of, of, of this year at the very earliest, and so that's kinda what we're looking at. You know, folks, I mean, I, I can't, I can't express how, this, these have been coming in like fastballs at this point, and our heads are spinning trying to get this done because we're working with legal teams and engineering firms and construction teams and, and purchasing agents and different things of that nature, so, um, it's, it's been a, it's been a rush.
Yeah, I thought the first timeline was aggressive, this one sounds like it's even more aggressive.
Yup.
Okay.
So the problem's gonna be, it's trying to get, if the county board decides, I guess we could have that vote first, if you choose to, um, spend any more money towards broadband, but we'd have to bring resolutions forward and, I mean, do you guys have everything set up as far as you know where the money's going, you know how much you got from towns, and you know what your ask is from us?
Brings my question up, is I guess before we voted on where we're, that we're gonna spend money, I'd like to see where it was gonna be spent.
Well, we're not, we're not, tonight your vote is not on any particular deal, it's how much money to, of ARPA funds do you want to put towards broadband?
If you want us to come back next week, we're ready.
I know, that's, that's what we, well, that's what we'd have to do. I mean, that's, realistically, I mean, no, here in the timeframe, we'd have to get resolutions together and back here, what, two, what's, I don't, I don't have a calendar.
Next March meeting for the board?
Yeah, well, no, it would be before the board meeting, cause you, when's the latest you can get, you need the information from us?
Let, let's, let's call, like I said, the seventeenth is the due date, which is Thursday, the seven.
What the heck, another?
That, uh, St. Patrick's Day, right? And so ultimately I would say that we would def- desperately need to have the finalization by the, you know, Monday, the 14th, but the 12th would be better.
So we're going to have to have a special board meeting.
So we could do it in two weeks essentially. We could do March 10th, which is the Thursday. So I just, the reason I bring that up is you got to keep that in mind as we're having this conversation is we're, we'd have to come back here and, um, whatever money you allocate, they would have to submit. We'd have to see if, if that's what you guys want to do. I know, um,
You got a buck.
What's that?
Buck's got a question.
Oh, good.
Shouldn't we, I mean, we're getting the cart before the horse here. You know, if we say right now that we want to spend more money and you want to know how much?
Yep.
And they got a plan that we haven't seen yet.
Oh, welcome.
I don't know what to tell you. We're in crazy time. All I could tell you.
Yeah. But I mean, let's slow down here, folks.
Well, the only way to slow down is not give them the money.
Okay, Buck. My point here is what happens if we say, yeah, we'll give them this money. Okay. But the final vote is July.
Nope. But not for that, it wouldn't be. That'd be gone. Just like we allocated 1.7 already, whatever you would allocate for that, that money's gone.
The same thing with the, with the, uh, our roads then?
Yep. So what I would do is take what's remaining and come up with a plan with whatever money is left in ARPA. So the idea tonight was to vote on both. So let's say you guys decided to give four million to broadband and additional 2 million to highway or whatever that number is. I take that off of what the total is available and then come back with a plan that I've kind of been hearing you guys, obviously what you're looking for and split that. Yeah. Just like we allocated the 1.7 before, you know, anything else got done, we'd do the same thing. That would be considered allocated funds for, for my purpose.
We got Ken and then Charlene. Ken, you had a question?
Not necessarily.
Anymore?
My head is causing here.
As a, as a shopper, I think I have to know how much money I've got in the purse. What are we, what are, what is the amount we're working?
We got 10,849,103. That's what's available that we haven't allocated. Well, let's say just hypothetical. Let's say you guys decide to vote, decide to put money to our, towards broadband. You decide to, um, let's say it's $3 million and throw the number out. Say it's $3 million. We get applications from them and they want $7 million. I would have to take that $3 million and come up a way that would split it between the three that would make logical sense. If it's by location, if it's by, um, each per, each company or whatever that is, I would have to come up with that and present that to the committee and then they would have to come up with the rest of the funds asking for their grant, grant amount.
But we don't know where the expansion is right now.
You will. I mean, before you, before you approve that, the plan that would, it has to come before you, you guys could vote them all down. There'd be, just like we did last time, we had three resolutions that showed exactly where, how many they were going to serve, what the map was. You'd have the exact same thing in front of you and then you would vote on yay or nay on all three of them. You could decide to do none of them. You could decide to do all three of them.
That's next March 10th.
This March. Not, not next March. Talking two weeks.
March 10th.
Yeah.
All that would be brought before us.
Yep. Right? I mean, that's what you guys.
If you want to see it right now, we, you're, you're HDMI and we can show you exactly.
We're not there yet.
We aren't there.
Ready for March 17th, no matter what.
We have been working diligently on this and so we're ready. You're, you're the last.
And we put, we already have the resolutions together. We, I mean, it's not going to, it's going to take work, obviously like everything does, but we, we will get it done in two weeks.
Well, let's move to the questions at hand.
Okay.
I guess if I can vote to allocate a certain dollar figure, I'm on board with putting something towards broadband probably and maybe more towards highways. But before I can do that, I got to know where, what we're thinking on the rest of these projects because basically our 10 million is kind of spent here pretty close.
Yeah, it would be filling. We'd fill in the rest of the projects. I'd bring that forward. You guys would have opportunity to decide if you want those projects or not want those projects or substitute those projects for something that's on that list. Um, so you still would, it just eliminates how much money is available, obviously. The amount of money that's available, I'd look at the list and see what I think is prioritized, what I've heard from you guys, what you think is prioritized and then prioritize that list. So at some point we got to come to a decision and.
Well, let's get this on the floor and then we can vote.
Yeah. Can I just throw out some numbers? So they're, okay. So out of the 12,559,000 we started with, we have allocated 1,709,956 dollars towards broadband. So that's gone. We have 10,849,103 left. So that's what you have to play with. Currently in our plan, the 1.7 million is about 13% of our budget, um, for the 12 million. And in our plan currently, you have about five, you have 5 million put towards highway, um, right now, just so you know. But so you have 10,849 to allocate out for broadband highways and then the rest of the projects I'll fill in as money's available.
So the first motion that I will be seeking is a motion, do you wish to allocate more than 1,709,956 dollars or 13.6%, of the ARPA funds for broadband? I would be seeking a motion. From the floor on that. Do you wish to do that? Going once.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion's been made by Supervisor Ives. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Charlene. Discussion. Any other questions that haven't been asked? Yes, Mr. supervisor?
I'm trying to follow this. If, if we say yes, we want to approve more money, do we ever know how much more money?
That's the second.
That's the second question.
Yeah. What, what the chair has asked now, are we looking to do additional funds from what you're already at? Then, then the second motion I assume would be how much?
And without doing the math, real quickly here, if all these things are approved, uh, how much is still out there? Not pretty much, right?
I wouldn't worry about the list. I mean, the list was a brainstorming idea coming from various sources. So I, I, the list is going to get shrunk down accordingly to how much money you, you guys want to allocate. The two top things I heard were broadband and highway. So, and those are big dollar numbers. So I think you, the idea would be you guys decide on that and then I would look at the list and prioritize it and bring it back forward, um, for your approval or, or not approval or whatever you guys decide to do with that.
Randy, can I just give an example? Like for our project, it's like 2. some million dollars. We'd be looking at, you know, let's just say 350,000 from you guys. You're going to help 316 households for that much money or you're going to move a wall for 450,000? So think of it that way too, right?
Any other discussions?
No.
Any other discussion from the board?
A clarification again. We're voting to approve more money, but we're not deciding the amount tonight.
We are deciding the amount tonight. That would be the second motion.
The second motion.
Right now you're just saying, hey, we're on board to do something. We don't know what. Someone would have to come up with the dollar amount and you guys can debate what that dollar amount is.
Okay. Hearing none, then I would, if you, you wish to allocate more, you would press yes. If you do not, you press your red button, which is no. Time. Yep. Vote.
Nine yes, three no.
Okay. So it passes to allocate more than the 1,700,000. Now for the big one. Number two, I would seek a motion as to how much more money we want to spend on broadband. And so whoever comes up first will have the amount with the motion.
Can we talk first?
Yeah.
Can we talk first? Not really, can we?
Well.
It's in the discussion part. Put the motion on the floor.
Get it on the floor. Yep.
Put the motion on first.
Put it on the floor that we increased the amount. The broadband. We already had that. I made a motion to set the amount.
That's what we're looking at now.
Okay.
Yep. How much?
Got to get it on the floor.
That's what I asked for.
I make a motion.
Yeah, we got to have an amount.
We're going to argue.
I'll make a motion to put $1 more in broadband.
I will do it.
Okay. Okay. Their motion's been made by Mr. McGill, $1 more and it's been seconded by Supervisor Hall. Now, discussion. We want to adjust that, amend it.
I think it should be 2 million all east of 27. That's my.
Oh, it's just like throwing a deer in front of wolves.
Try to be helpful.
The motion is to, for $1. To increase broadband by. And that motion's been made and seconded.
$1.
So.
The motion on, you want me to, you got it, Chair?
Yeah.
What's the motion?
That's the motion. Um, if somebody wants to amend it, they can amend it. And I see a hand up. Mr. Schmidt.
Question. We heard from one company what they're potentially looking for. Do the other companies in the room have a number in mind or?
We, we have our number. We're prepared to tell you that right now if you need it.
It can't hurt. I'm not saying you're going to get it, but.
So the, the entire project that we're proposing that in, that, that actually includes, uh, Halle and, uh, Lafayette is 5.976614 million dollars.
That's just the state ask.
Okay. That's, that's what we're going to be asking. Okay.
Seven and a half million.
Oh, seven and a half million is the, is the project. So I'll, you know, you know
I'm Travis. I'm operations manager and I work on.
He lives this and he reads that. So.
Playing with the maps and looking at all this. So the, the total grant package we're looking at, and there is some into Old Clare County, and then I'll speak specific to Chippewa because we'd be doing both areas. It's a large areas we presented, uh, is eight and a half million dollars. The Chippewa County ask is 1.08. So, uh, to be specific, since we're throwing a motion out, 1,87,500. And so what that would serve is town of Halle, town of Se, town of Halle, town of Lafayette and town of Tilden. So town of Halle, it's going to go by 63 homes. Town of Lafayette is around 400. In the town of Tilden, Eagle Point is around 122. So our ask is, varies from 1,500 a home to 2,000. And the average is 10 to 11 for those homes.
Any further discussions?
Yeah. What was the other number? I don't remember what you said.
Yeah. So I, I mean, even 350,000 would help us because we're at 2.1 million dollar project. We could put that down and we would change our percentage wise, what we'd ask from the states or more app to get the state money. Because if we go at such a high percentage without this money, we might not get the state money and then we can't help these people at all.
Correct.
What area would you be looking to serve?
This was the Cleveland, Arthur, Ruby, Anson, and this would be 316 homes that were all in the white area.
There was another company that presented, um, we had three last time, but the other two, so I don't know what the other number would be.
Okay. Any further discussion?
That means none of the money would be going like Colburn, Delmar, Edson. I mean, we're circling all around them.
I don't know what 24/7, what they're, where they're looking. You know at all, Charlie?
No. We, we don't know that either, Randy. They've, they've not been forthright in that. So.
Yeah. You can't really control where they're going to go. I mean, they're, they do applications and they do off business decisions and we don't have that authority, the demand and the goal somewhere. They put in applications and try to get the funds. They try to, like they said, bite the elephant, right? Take one bite at a time and continue the expansion.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
I guess I'd like to ask my fellow board members that voted no on the last resolution. I think I know where one's coming from and what the other two are thinking or what their thought process is, what is the, is no way or it's too fast or it's too much or just.
Right? Right now we're on how much you want to spend.
I know.
It's $1 so far.
And that's their motion and.
Feel like an auctioneer.
They can rationalize, they can rationalize their $1 then I guess.
So. Board members, anybody got a number? If not, we will vote on it. Yes, go ahead.
Well, I think we'd be making a bigger inroads into the vast white area with Antero's proposal for that 380,000 or whatever in the.
50.
160. You know, at, at least it would serve more into that rural area.
Just a thought.
The thought that's bounced around in my mind is maybe we need to come up with a number per house that they're serving. I mean, it doesn't help the sparsely populated areas, but it gives a little guidance going forward also as to what we're open to. I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but I don't know how we do that necessarily.
I think what we heard last time when they presented, it can be vastly different.
Right.
Depending if they're.
But I mean, that's.
500.
That's up to them to figure out how, this is what we feel we can contribute with.
Oh. So am I hearing your, that is, like went on. Uh, are you saying that you're saying for each location will give $5,000 or each location will give $2,000? Is that what your adjustment?
Or whatever.
Whatever the number is.
We find a number to what their proposal.
Per house.
Per household, yeah. I mean, the terror right now is just over a thousand. The other one's somewhat higher.
Or 1,500 to 2,000 per customer.
Yeah. So you're twice as high as the terror is. But I mean, everybody wants something, but at the end of the day, a lot of times you're happy. It's like when you go to ask mom or dad for something, they give you half. Well, you're happy. You'd like more, but.
Ask for twice as much.
Right.
Okay. I know this is a tough question.
You would have to amend the motion if that's.
Right.
So what, what, what we need is we, we have to have a dollar amount. We got X amount of dollars in the pot.
Yep.
We've got already 1 million, whatever it is allocated to broadband. Do you want to increase that? And so how much? Well, I mean, we already voted that we.
I mean, you could, you could amend it and make a motion, say whatever your number is up to a certain $4 amount.
Right.
You know, you'd say, well, we're willing to give $2,000 for a household up to $3 million total or something. Just brainstorm with it.
They did mention the households that they were planning on servicing.
So, very nice. You have the floor.
Oh, thank you. I am not good at math, but if I understood what they said, it looks like maybe we should, would think about amending it to an additional 417,500?
Their ask is a little over 1.4 million right now.
Oh, because I was looking at the totals here. Okay. I'm bad at math, so.
No, no, that's fine. No, and they just said it verbally. So I heard was 1,87,000, the other one was 350,000. So you'd be at about 1.4. And there's one more company out there that we don't know. I'm sure they're going to ask. I just don't know how much.
And right now we have what allocated, did you say?
1.7 is currently what you've, you've already approved.
3.1 million if you just did these two right now with your 1.7 already out there.
So fire steel.
Are we obligated to have to give to all of them?
No.
Then I propose because we've eliminated, we know we eliminated 500,000 off that page right there. Could go up to 500,000.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Amended?
Amend the motion to 500,000.
Amended. 500,000. So there's been a motion to amend up 500,000. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Howser. We will vote on the, or excuse me, discussion, any more discussion?
On the motion.
Yeah.
On the amendment.
The amendments. Any more discussion on the amendment?
So just to be clear, if we vote on this and we vote for $500,000, we're done talking about broadband?
I don't think we'd have the time because they don't know when the next, there may be another go around in another year. They could definitely come back and ask for additional money if we have money available. Um, but for, it'd be very tough to do that.
And Mr. Chair, Randy, if we also, if we talked about that letter support so that those that come in after that, at least the county can submit a letter of support for the next couple of years showing we can continue to, would help additional applications in different grant programs.
Yeah. I think after hearing from the board, I'd feel very comfortable having a letter of support come from the board or my behalf or, um, be on behalf of the board. Obviously maybe have the chair. Yeah, I think after hearing from the board, I'd feel very comfortable having a letter of support come from the board, or my behalf, or, um, be on behalf of the board. Obviously, maybe I have the chair's side or something, yeah. I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna argue against that.
Okay, any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, those in favor of the amendment?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Oh, excuse me.
Can you reinstate what we're voting on? Because I got lost.
Okay, you wanna read it?
The motion is, or is to amend the motion of the increase of broadband to from $1 to $500,000.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, then I'll have the. Just read it, so if you are in favor of it, push your green button. If you're not, red button. Okay, call the vote.
Nine yes, three no.
Okay, nine yes, three no.
All right.
So, the amendment passes. Now, we go back to the amended motion. And I will have the clerk, when she gets to it there, read that. Original motion.
The original motion was to increase broadband spending to $1. Now it's amended.
Been amended, so. On the amended motion.
What we just did?
No, we voted amended.
Yeah, original.
Oh, voted on it from a dollar. And now we have to vote on it, on the motion. The whole motion has amended.
But it's kinda, this is just.
A little weird.
Technically, technically, we already voted on it, but to make it nice and clear, we're gonna vote again to motion amended. So, we'll be voting again. Mr. Schmidt?
So, for tonight's purposes, it's gonna be up to Randy to figure who, guess what?
No.
Well, when they submit the applications, I have $500,000. Come up with a methodology that makes sense.
And bring it back to probably exacting it through the county board?
Uh, I don't even know if it needs to go through, I think this has been debated over county board, so. I can't remember last time, did we go through?
Yes, we.
Okay, we'd have to have.
Have to come through the county board.
But you could make the next county board meeting in order to make their timeline.
We can make next county board, I mean, exact would be really hard. So, I, I mean, I guess we'll talk to the chair, but, I mean, I assume you guys would be comfortable bringing it directly here, because the executive committee, it's been a action of the county board, allocate the funds, so I would recommend bringing it directly here.
Todd, don't seem to be sweating it.
Okay, last minute discussion here. Those in favor, press your, press the green one. Those opposed, the red. Yep, open them.
Nine yes, three no.
Okay. Oh, I lost my computer. Okay, um. Gotta get to the right spot. Number two, request direction from the county board whether the county wishes to allocate additional ARPA funds for highway infrastructure and if so, how much. Randy?
Um, so, adding that number up, so what I did is just did a quick calculation and reduced how much you had available by $500,000. So, with everything allocated currently to broadband, you have 10 million. 10,349,103 dollars. Currently in the plan, there's $5 million going to highway. All I got.
I'll make a motion that we allocate 10.3 million to the highway department. For the use of pulverizing, resurfacing, and shouldering of approximately 44 miles.
Okay, the first question is, if you wish to allocate more than 5 billion, and then the second one would be a amount, so.
Allocate more than five.
Okay. Motion made to allocate more than 5 billion. Is there a second? By Supervisor Steele. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Oh.
Do we call for the amount now, or?
Well, we'll be coming up with a vote whether we're gonna go.
Oh, this is just yes or no?
Any other discussion? Ready for the vote? Okay, those in favor would press green, those opposed, press your red one. Now we can vote, eh?
No. Maybe not. Now we can. Too slow.
Charlie, the tag.
Okay.
You're voting.
11 yes, 1 no.
Now, we will move to number two. We hear a motion as to how much.
Chair?
Yes.
Can we talk to Brian first and talk a little bit about this before we make a motion and do something?
He can talk after.
No, we need a motion.
Yeah, he can talk after you do the motion. He can call after, I mean, after it's. I would wait till the motion.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
I'll make a motion, we take the balance of 10.3 million allocated to the highway department for the pulverizing and re-blacktopping and shouldering of approximately 44 miles of road.
Okay, this motion, is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second it. Now we can discuss.
Go on, come up, Brian, they can ask whatever questions you need.
I don't have a presentation or anything. Is there questions?
Somebody bothering wants to know.
Well, I figure Ron made the motion by rights, he should be the first one to debate if he's got, if he wants to say so. So, I'm waiting for Ron to jump in here.
We're, again, we're talking the amount here.
Right, we're, we're talking the dollar amount, but again, the dollar amount that would be spent on the highways would help every individual citizen in the county, whether they're going to work, whether they're going to recreate, whether they're hauling goods to market. So, by allocating that money and allowing the highways to be rebuilt, we're gonna be investing in the most important piece of infrastructure that the county owns. So, whether you need the fire truck to come to your house, or the Amazon truck, you're gonna benefit from that road being fixed. It would also increase our passer rating, it would take our worst roads, move them up to an excellent, which would be moving about 35% of our roads from poor and failing up into the excellent category. And so in the future, it's probably, this is our opportunity to take a step ahead, because we know in the past, the highway department has been falling behind on the highways. So, this is our opportunity to take the money from the ARPA funds, strategically spend it in a way that every single individual citizen is gonna recoup something from that and benefit from it.
Mr. Schmidt, you're waving your pen.
Yes, sir. I've got, I've got a little problem with the way this is worded, for one, and there's, I think there's a few other projects on here we need to look at. First problem is the way it's worded, and Brian, it's my understanding that after you black top a new road, you should be looking at chip sealing in six, seven years down the road to seal this new surface, correct?
That's ideal, yeah.
Okay, so we do 40 miles a road, there's no way we're gonna be able to chip seal this in seven years, is there, along with the other roads we've done?
Right, we're only chip sealing about 20, 25 miles a year right now.
Right. So, and the other roads that are, should be re-chip sealed that have been chip sealed previously. So, what we're doing is, we're setting ourselves up for a financial bind here, or we're not gonna be able to take care of our new roads like we should. And make no mistake, I, I started griping about roads first here, but I, I have a little problem with putting that in this motion. I think that's something that the next highway committee has to start to look at, is how we spend the money we allocate towards roads. There may be some chip sealing or crack sealing, rather than just doing X number of miles of new black top, in order to preserve the roads that are in between our best ones and our poorest ones. And I think we're getting ahead of ourselves tonight when we make this motion to do this, all new roads. And then there's a few other projects on here that I can see that have some merit. I think we've talked about groundwater, that's something also a lot of our citizens have an issue with. I think we need to allocate some money for that, and I think some of these parts, things probably are worthy projects. I don't know if all this needs to be done, or maybe to the degree it's on there. But I think there needs to be some money for some of this stuff too, because it's hard to do this stuff on the ordinary budget at a certain point. But I do wanna see a substantial amount of money go into highway, but I wanted to see spent wisely, wisely also.
Yeah, and some of the details that weren't in what we submitted, I mean, there's a lot of thought that went into, just, do we just do paving? Do we just do low-volume roads? Do we just do pace ratings of three? We did save, you know, a couple hundred thousand each year in our, in our internal plan to do chip seals, because we know that we can't, can't let that slide, and if we're doing more paving, we should be doing more chip sealing too.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Randy, could you talk about, I don't know, sorry, can you talk about the funding coming for, um, some fence? I know we, we talked about that here before, but you have any more information on that?
Um, not really. Uh, we're, we're really fast-tracking three projects right now to try and get that first piece of, uh, the 2022 money. We don't think a lot of counties and especially the towns that we're basically competing against are gonna be ready for that 22 money, so we're doing our best to get three good projects submitted for that, and we think we got a pretty good chance of getting those. After the first year, um, we're gonna be competing against everybody in the state, and it's probably gonna get pretty watered down, so hopefully, we can get a big part that first, first year.
Chair, just, are, are any of those federal funds coming through the normal LRE programs, or anything like that, or are they all competitive-based projects that you guys, everybody has a, before in the state, or does the county get any set allocation, I guess?
Um, no, no, I don't think so. I think it's gonna be a, uh, kinda like the STP program is now, where, um, you're competing against other projects around the state. I think the urban area is a little bit different, so if we submit a project in the Eau Claire-Chippewa Falls urban area, they're probably gonna have a pool of money to work with, but there's just really not a lot of details yet.
We're not really guaranteed that some of the money, as far as you know, right now?
Oh, right, we're not guaranteed anything in the, in the BIL funds. That project, that work will all be led to contracts, and so I think the contractors are gonna be swamped with that work. And so that's why we feel like we could do a lot of this, um, ARPA work ourselves, and if there is some we contract out, um, that makes sense too, we'll definitely look at it.
Mr. Howser?
I'm not sure if this is a motion yet, but a few weeks, a few weeks ago, Randy talked about sweeping whatever is left over into the highway funds, and, uh, and a lot of the proposals here really need to come before the whole board, and perhaps we'll take one in its entirety, and perhaps we'll just eliminate one. We might consider modifying it. But then after we're done with all of those, whatever is left goes into the highway fund. But that way, it puts the, the highway and all the other proposals on equal footing to, rather than jumping to the highway and then everybody else figures out what's left. So, I guess, I would make a proposal that we address all of those issues that are currently on the board, on this list, and then figure out how much money we have left to add to highway.
We're looking for an amendment, so you would want to amend the amount to what is left over after the other project list is decided upon?
Correct.
So, that's what your amendment does have? Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Then, seconded by Charlene.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, it's still leaving on the table some really specific mileage, 44 miles, that part. And it seems like we just heard that we're setting ourselves up for failure in additional expense, so that amendment's.
I think the, the motion was.
This is just the amendment, we'll take care of this amendment, then we'll deal with the rest of the language.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we couldn't deal with the rest of the language.
Was I understanding right, that this amendment does not change the original one, other than we wait till the end? But the original one about using it for pavement, all, all those words are still in the original motion, that's, that's.
All those original words are in there, the only difference is the amount is what would be left over after the project.
So, just understand, this amendment does not clarify that anymore, it just says, we'll deal with it later, for those specific things, still, that's, that's, that's your point. If that's what you intended on, on your motion there.
Did you?
On your amendment.
So, we can only amend two times, so if someone wanted to make an amendment, address those other issues, we can do that.
We haven't voted on this amendment.
We haven't got a second yet.
Yeah, we got a second.
Did we?
Bush.
Yeah. But you haven't voted on, you have to vote on this one first, don't you?
Yeah, this would be on the amendment.
It's, it's hard to amend an amendment that hasn't been voted on.
Can amend.
Before you take a vote? Okay.
Two times, totally.
So, what is on the floor right now?
What's on? You got it, Jackie? Okay, what's on the floor?
What I have is to wait on the amount for highway until other projects are voted on.
Allocate that amount, yeah.
But the part about it having to be all paving, is that still in there?
That's all there, 44 miles.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The easiest way to take care of this, I think we all realize we've got a problem here with our language, is to vote the whole thing down and start over.
I agree.
I think that's an excellent idea.
That, that's the easiest way to deal with this.
Did that proposal, I'm sorry, I don't turn, did that proposal get a second, or did it die?
Your proposal did, yes.
No, I'm talking about rough, rigorous.
I second it.
You seconded it.
Yeah, because you're amending, you're amending Ron's, so.
Okay, so. Hearing no amendments, for the amendments, we will vote on the. Say what? Oh, yeah. We're gonna be voting on the amendment here first.
So, just, can I have a clarification question?
Sure.
Is what you're asking, what you're amending, does that mean that the $5 million is still in this plan?
That's.
I think it's all about dying, we can start over, Randy.
I think it's over above the $5 million, isn't it?
Yeah, it's over and above.
$5 million's in here, then there's just whatever's left.
We voted to do above $5.
$10 million goes.
That passed.
So?
With the 10.3.
Is Ron's number.
Moves that $5 million.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that's.
Five billion, .3 over.
5.3 million over that. Over that.
So in summary, if, if, if every, every motion here fails, there's still $5 million allocated to highway?
Right.
Well, just because these all fail, doesn't...
Does everybody understand what the amendment is?
No. Absolutely.
Jackie, can you read the amendment back, please?
I have...
No, we only got the one, the other one didn't go through. Amendment.
The amendment is to wait on the amount until other projects are voted on and allocate, and then allocate the funds to the highway department.
So that's...
It'll be the 10.3 million that's in the first.
Can, can I correct that amendment, then?
Well, if, no, we need to...
My thought would be to... Okay, my thought would be to eliminate the commitment to all new roads.
Let's, let's just vote this all down and start over.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment, if you want to vote it down, vote it down, red button, if you want it to go through, you press the...
Down, start all over.
Yep.
Okay.
Amendment, Jackie?
Is to wait on the amount for the highway department until other projects are voted on, and then allocate those funds to the highway department.
Everybody?
I don't, I got one more button.
Okay, push your buttons now. Yep.
One yes, eleven no.
Now we're back to the original motion that Ron put forward. And I'll have, yeah, when she's ready.
That, well, I don't think I have all of it, but it's to allocate 10 point, roughly 10.3 million to highway department, pulverize, repaving, shoulder road for 44 miles?
Approximately 44 miles.
That's the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so if you want the motion, go...
Are we voting?
Yep. Push your green button, if you want to vote it down, you'd vote your red one.
Yeah, I'll call it.
Yep.
One yes, eleven no.
Okay, now we're back at the beginning. How much?
Chair.
Mr. Schmidt.
Let me take a stab at this. I move that we allocate the remaining funds that are left, ARPA funding, for highways, to be determined how it's spent by the Highway Committee, when the amount is known, and we know more about the infrastructure bill, and...
Can we get the read or digest version of this?
Let me, let me start over, that's too complicated.
It sounds good.
I move that the board allocates the remainder of the, the ARPA funds, after determining which projects on the list go forward, for highways. Meaning this list of projects here that have been talked about, once the board votes on that, then the remainder of the funds after that, you vote on for, or go to highway.
So if they come up with $4 million, six, just use round numbers, $6 million would go to the roads, if we come up with $3 million, $7 million would go to the roads.
Isn't that already built into her? Got to have a second.
Got to have one.
I'll second it.
Second, man, Ron. Question of clarification, is that above the $5 million? Yes.
No.
Because they already voted on it.
No.
The $5 million is not voted on.
No.
Because the $5 million is part of that project.
Nothing's been voted on there, so it's, we're, we're just talking...
Well, the first one, you...
Above the $5 million.
Okay, this is going to be over and...
Well, it, it's a moot issue, I mean, the $5 million is already on the list, but when we get to this, by my math is, what I can see doing at, at maximum, we're going to have another, probably $2 million at least, that we haven't allocated, I'm thinking, to go with the $5 million that we have on that list.
So, yeah, so which version?
May, maybe more, yeah.
Seven for roads, three for all the other...
Well, I'm not, I don't even want to put a number on it, because... Yeah, I mean, some of this, I think the administrator has some thoughts on, and...
Okay, let's, uh, let's try to get this a little more organized. Discussion.
I, I mean, isn't that pretty much already laid out, that we already set that? Spent money will automatically go to the highway? That's what my plan's... So we already have that?
Right.
Correct.
Mr. Howser.
But this isn't, isn't unspent money, that when the board goes through the entire list, and based on, on suggestions from the, from all sources, and we, as a group, make up our mind about how much in each one of these categories, there's going to be some money left over, et cetera, so whatever's left over after that board meeting, um, then goes automatically to the highway department.
Only thing I was going to bring up is, we do have a contingency, we need a contingency amount, because these projects aren't going to come in on dollar, so I would present that as part of my plan. I, I see what you're saying.
That was a percentage that you were going by then, for the contingency.
It was 10 or 15 percent, somewhere in that area.
If that's what we've already decided what was going to happen, then why are we voting on that?
It's a little different. It's not, when Supervisor Howser explained it, it's a little different than what I presented. What I presented was, if, um, the contingency would go towards highway and any money's not spent, which meant that projects didn't get done, so it's a little different than what I was anticipating, so. He, what he's, what I, my understanding is, I would present, um, the projects to the county board as a plan, the county board would decide to allocate what projects they want to do and how much those dollar amount is, and what's ever left over minus some contingency, it would all, um, would go towards highway. That's why, that's what I mean. But just so you guys know, my purpose of doing this was so I know how much money to work with for the rest of the plan. And I know these were your two hot topics, so that's why I wanted you to allocate a, a specific dollar amount, so I know what's, what, um, make the rest of the plan look like, because right now I could just submit this plan as, as is, but, which is fine, it's, it's up to you guys, but that was the purpose of it.
Mr. Schmidt.
The two hot topic, topics we talked about last time was highways and broadband. Broadband wasn't on here, so they got, obviously got some talk then, because it wasn't here, it was brought up. The highways is because a number of us have constituents talking to us about highways.
Exactly.
It's not that some of this other stuff maybe doesn't rise to the level of importance on there, it's just that it didn't get discussed.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you see what, see the position we've been put in, is you want a number, but we're looking at this list, and hey, there's some things on here I'd like to see happen, and it's not a lot of money, out of $12 million, but you're asking us to put a number on highways, and you put us in a tough spot.
You guys are going to be in a tough spot, sooner or later. I mean, you're...
I'm okay with being in a tough spot, but I don't like to be in this tough spot.
Well, you're...
If it doesn't make sense to you.
Sooner or later, you guys have to make, so it's either make them now or make them later. You're going to be in the exact same spot in another few months, a different board.
The only way we can get in that spot tonight, in my mind, is if we go down this list and we take a straw poll on what everybody thinks, if you want a solid number.
Okay.
I don't know if I've done it properly for that.
Yeah, I don't need that. I just, I just really need to know what, but that's what I wanted, but this will work, I mean, I'll, if you guys decide to do it, I'll adjust the plan and do it accordingly. I'll do what you guys want done, so I'll figure it out.
So is there any more discussion on the amount?
Yeah, one of the problems I see with this for Randy is that, are we comfortable with $5 million? Do we really like to have $7 million? We would like to have, would we like to have $8 million? Yes, our two biggest things are the highways and our infrastructure with, with that, and he's, he's stuck with now, it's somewhere, somewhere between $5 and $10 million, we're happy with. I mean, that's, that's a pretty wide direction to try to figure out. You know, we, 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 we committed $2 million for broadband stuff, so we know that. You know, a nu, a number thrown out, I think, was $7, $8 million or something like that for highway, if we were to put the priority we have on our highways and put a number on it for them. And then that extra stuff, like you talked before, the contingencies, rough stuff, that, that would still apply to it, but we have committed, as a board, of spending money on our highways, which all of us agree, I think, uh, is, is a place that we'll never, we'll never have a big enough pot of money to fix highways, this is an opportunity to catch up.
Well, sure, I was to allocate remaining ARPA funds to highway after other projects voted on, and the funds go to the highway department.
Any other discussion on that?
I think if he, Randy needs a number, I'm thinking all of us probably think like, $7 million, $2 million more on that would be probably a good number, you know? So, I'm just saying out of the box, Randy, we're thinking about $2 million more than the $5 million, but...
Love that in a form of a motion.
But we're not going to vote on the other motion.
Well, you can amend it. You can amend it, Dave, if you want.
You can amend it, Dave. You have to vote on the first motion first, only...
Well, you'd have to, if you, for instance, if you voted to say up to $2 million, because they already got the motion, extra funding, then you say up to $2 million, and that would set the $2 million amount.
Dave, if you want to amend my motion, make it a minimum, minimum of $2 million.
How would I word it?
That's a thought, I mean, you do what you want, it's your amendment, but, because I think there's going to be a little more there, personally.
I think there was, we'd like to see at least $2 million, I don't know how to word that.
Up to at least $1 million.
No, add a minimum, if you want.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you have to go with $7 million?
I, I have a question again, the, the $5 million we're not committed to yet, are we?
We're all going to vote on that, though, right?
Well, the five...
His, his vote has nothing to do with $5 million, it has, as I understand the motion, is what's left after we allocate other ARPA funds goes to highway, no, $5 million is the figure you see on this PIPA paper here, so if you're saying $2 million, you're not, $2 million doesn't mean $7 million, $2 million means $2 million.
That's right.
Just to clarify that.
The point, point here is that we voted to allocate more than $5 million, you voted on that, and...
That's true.
Now, how much?
So if I make a motion to...
That's true.
Did we, did we amend the motion to make a minimum of $2 million extra to the highway? That was the third motion.
Yeah, you're right.
It was before his motion.
I'll second.
Amendment is made by Dave and seconded by Buck Steele.
Please repeat when you're ready.
Okay, that is the amendment, any discussion?
We, we need to hear...
No, no one does. So it's to increase, this is just, we're amending, okay, so it should be to allocate remaining ARPA funds to highway after other projects voted on, at a minimum of $2 million?
Sounds good.
Captures it, yeah.
Well, it's... That's not giving him a number to work with, that's not giving, that is greater number, is it?
That does.
It gives him a number.
Could you clarify that to say, you know, an additional $2 million to make a total of $7, so it's very clear what you're talking about?
$2 million on top of the $5 million.
Which we'd already voted on.
Right.
Now that we're all straight. Any other discussion? Everybody clear? Yep.
I don't have, don't look at me, Jackie, I'm like, I'm done.
What I have is to allocate the remaining ARPA funds, uh, to highway after other items are voted upon in an amount, uh...
Makes no sense.
Of a minimum of, up to a minimum of $2 million, or not up to...
It's a minimum.
Minimum amount, $2 million.
We already, we already confirmed the five. Addition of the five.
Okay.
What if there's not $2 million left? You've worded, you've worded it leftover funds with a minimum of $2 million, so how do you define?
Open-ended.
To have $2 million left?
Well, that means...
That's another, there's way too many assumptions in all these words.
We start voting on this stuff, we'll take, make sure we get $2 million off of it.
But what does it say to do that?
Yeah, but we...
The, the motions are way too complicated.
Okay, let's read the, uh... Motion as writs we have right now. No, no, just want clarification in the motion.
I'll just read it, but to allocate remaining ARPA funds to highway department, wait, to allocate remaining ARPA funds to highway department after other projects are voted on in an amount, minimum of $2 million.
That causes you great complication in allocating other funds, and nothing says you have to have $2 million left.
I think we should vote this one down and start over.
Defining things in such small boxes makes it really hard all the time.
Who's going out for pizza today?
All, all you wanted was additional money for the high liquor.
Who's going to...
Somebody's going to adjust these numbers, isn't he? That's what we should do. Yeah, could you, could you write the vote, that way maybe you can adjust...
I don't know if that'll help at all, but we'll try.
Well, that's the point, you know?
Okay. Any more discussion on the amendment? So then I will have the clerk read the amendment, and if you are in favor of it, you press green, if opposed, red.
So the amendment is to allocate remaining ARPA funds to highway department after other projects are voted on in an amount that is minimum of $2 million.
Dave. If you are in favor, press green, if you are opposed, press red.
We're voting on just the amendment.
This is the amendment, so the amendment first. Yes, you can release.
But six yes, six no.
No, original motion.
And accept another amended motion?
Or you can, you can make an amendment to it.
I would, I would like to change the original motion to allocate a minimum of $7 million to the highway fund.
$7 million to the highway. Is there a second?
So the original motion on the floor, though, is to allocate remaining ARPA funds to highway after projects voted on, that is completely different than this.
Right, this is an amendment.
You can add the language with a minimum of $7 million. Too highway.
I, I'm removing, removing the words, uh, leftover funds, how, how is it, how is it phrased?
Strike.
Yes, strike, strike, strike the words leftover funds. And just allocate. Pardon?
Because there's also the language, after other items voted on to the highway department, you want that term in there? Is that?
No.
Okay, then I'm saying you're pretty much eliminating the entire motion. You're making the amendment, it's not really a amendment.
Let, let me make this simple. Let me, I'll make this simple. If you want to go back and do amount like $7 million, then let's just vote down the original motion and start over. Do you, is, discussion? Amendment, anybody? Mr. Schmidt.
The problem with not leaving language in there as to what to with the remaining funds is when the next board votes on these, each individual item, we're going to end up with a pot of money left, hopefully, because I hope some of these fail. My math says we've got probably $3 to $4 million with what I see as important in here, and what we've already allocated. So if you go $7 million, there's going to be a couple millions sitting here that you have to do something with, plus whatever additional money doesn't pass either Randy's muster or the board's muster.
Well, but...
I guess the only thing I would say is the highway, um, dollar amounts going to be on here, so you could take, you, the county board could decide to vote on that one last, there's minimum of $7 million, if there's money left over, you guys could allocate the funds to that at that time. I just put it last on the resolution.
That's what I was going to say. Dave?
Are we at a discussion board yet?
Yeah.
Okay. What Randy just said makes sense, I mean, in the, in, just want the, all of those proposals to get a fair shake.
I mean, in the, just want the, all of those proposals to get a fair shake. And then, you know, I'm not against $6 or $7 or $8 million. I just want the other ones to have a shot at making their case.
I'd just like to remind us that we determined that highways and the broadband were the two major things that we really need to do something with, so it would seem to make sense to make sure they're locked in somewhere that we're comfortable with.
Well, they're already locked...
They have open discussion and everything.
They're already locked in at $5 million and it will go higher.
Nothing's locked in yet.
The $5 million's locked in because the motion, the first motion on here, you want to pay more than $5 million, so I think the $5 million's locked in.
Because of that motion?
Yeah.
That complies that you're spending the $5 million?
It does not.
Okay, we're in discussion. Mr. Howser, do you wish to withdraw your amendment?
It never got voted on, did it?
No, just...
So it died for...
Okay.
Died for lack of a second.
Okay, so now we got to vote on the original motion, and if we want to start over, we would vote it down. Dave? Yes, we're going to vote on the original motion.
Read it again, Jackie, so I...
No, no one's voting it down and starting over.
Yes, for the last time. Okay, everybody understand? Okay, vote. You ready for the vote?
Yeah, they're voting.
They're waiting for me.
Okay, all 12 are in.
Yes, release, please.
Two yes and no.
Okay, how much?
Now I'd like to make a motion to, let's throw the number, allocate a minimum, how about, $7.5 million to the highway.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Total.
Ty, Michelle and Ron, both.
To the highway.
You pick.
$7.5 total.
Total, yes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for $7.5 million. Discussion. Total.
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 Not in addition to the five, question.
Yes.
We'd have to go borrow money if we did that. It'd be over the 12.
By making, by making a motion to, for a total of $7.5 million...
I said, I said minimum.
I didn't hear minimum, no.
I did say that motion.
She don't have it, she's right in the...
I heard total.
You might have been thinking about it, we didn't hear it, Chuck.
So what are we doing?
I heard minimum.
Minimum, total.
Total. Of $7.5.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Are you ready? Yep, so if you're in favor of the $7.5 million, she will have it ready for us here in a moment.
Million, minimum.
Minimum. Now you can vote. Green for yes, red for no. Good training there.
I'll tell her, and can I release?
Yeah, release, yeah.
A yes, two no.
Agenda items for future consideration. Okay. Your motion to... Is there a second? Do we need to roll a vote?[1793.52]